The April 14th, 2021 Brentwood Planning and Zoning Meeting. Can we start out by the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flags. United States of America. Which is. One nation. Under God. Invisible. Liberty. Justice.
Thank you. Is Mr. Nurnberger here? Could Ms. Wilkins, please do roll call to get us started.
Sherry Buildaback.
Yeah.
Mark Pavazza.
Here.
Rebecca Jacobs. Jeff Moore. Paul Moran. Hart Nelson.
Here.
John Newberger. John Ritter. Lisa Shearing.
Here. And Tom.
I'm here, and I believe Mr. Ritter joined us right as you said his name, so he is here. Do we have a quorum?
Okay. Yes.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, has everybody had a chance to review the minutes from the February 10th meeting, as well as the March 10th meeting? And assuming we have, are there any objections to approving said minutes by acclamation?
No objections.
Okay, hearing none, the minutes are approved. Next on the agenda is old business, of which we have none. So we will move on to new business, which is case number 2103, Site Development Plan for Review and Comment for McGrath Elementary School at 2350 St. Clair. Wanted to kick it off with Lisa. Who's gonna go first? The applicant, is the applicant here, somebody representing the school district?
Yes, can you guys hear me?
Brent Higgins, take it away. Thank you.
Okay, great. So my name is Brent Higgins, I am the architect. I work for HDK Architects, and we're here on behalf of the school district. Tonight, I'm gonna take you through the site plan, and kind of go through the different site approaches under the site. And then briefly kind of review the building as well. Schedule wise, we're looking to start construction this summer. Pretty much shortly after school is out of session. And this first part of construction, we'll be looking at doing a site excavation package. And then quickly following that, we'll be continuing on with the actual building construction, which we're looking at in towards the end of summer or early fall. And can I get permission to share my screen?
We may need to make you a co-host. Ms. Wilkins.
Okay. Now if everybody can see my screen now, this is the schedule that I just kind of briefly talked about. So this is showing that early site package, starting off towards the end of May, with the building continuing in end of summer to early fall. The school district is looking at doing a phased approach to this project. So McGrath will begin with building the building on the east side of the site. With the kind of lessons learned at the high school, middle school, we'll be actually looking at for the Mark Twain renovations, moving the students there over to the old McGrath building, while renovations are, the renovations and additions are done there. Following the completion of the Mark Twain project, the students will move back there from the old McGrath, and then the rest of the McGrath site will be finished out on the west side of the site. Moving on to the site plan, so this is what it's going to look like, the proposed site plan at the end of construction. So over here, this is where the existing McGrath currently sits. We're proposing to still enter in the sites from the existing St. Clair entry over here on the west side. We are proposing a one-way site access drive that enters in over here, and then queues up over here on the, to the east side of the site. And then it would exit back out onto High School Drive here. This drive here would align with the, I believe that is Harrison over here on the east side, so that intersection would align with that one. Currently on the site here, we have a prop approximately 83 stalls. Parking stalls designated for the school onsite. And with our queuing drive here, we can fit roughly 80 cars as well queuing up, so this should alleviate all the backing up that is currently happening out here on St. Clair with the current layout of the existing McGrath Elementary School. Other kind of site configuration, the building sits over here on the east side of the site. It engages High School Drive over here on the east side, but also our kind of queuing and loading area up here on the north, kind of northeast corner up here. So this is gonna be the building here in this purple area. Down here on the south side, this is a two-story building. So the first floor sits at about the same elevation as the existing soccer field out there. And then the second floor of this building would be roughly at the same elevation as Litzinger Road up here. On the north side of the building, this is gonna be a one-story building. So we've got our elementary wing over here, that's two stories, gym, and then our admin main entry area over here. And on the backside, we have the ECC wing that would be moving, relocating here from their existing building on a Tally Industrial Court. So this would be one story, and then they have their own separated entry over here on the backside with some dedicated parking over here. Going on towards the west end of the site, so located here in the center of the site, we have all of our playgrounds, along with hard playground, which also serves as our fire apparatus loop. And then back beyond that, going west further, we have playfields, pavilion that is existing that we'll be relocating, and then a secondary playfield over here on the southwest corner. So this site plan here is what, what it would look like when both buildings are occupied at the same time. So this would be at the completion of the new McGrath Elementary School. So the students at the existing would then transition over here, and then the students at Mark Twain would transition over here at the existing McGrath. Site access wise, students will still queue in here as they do currently. School times would be staggered by roughly about 30 minutes or so. As kind of recommended by the traffic study. So one school, so for the existing McGrath, parent pickup drop-off would come in, queue up and drop off here as they do currently, and then exit back out onto St. Clair. Then after the 30-minute window time, parents would pick up and drop off over here at the new McGrath over here. So they would enter in from St. Clair still, but then upon exiting the site, they would exit out onto High School Drive over here on the east side. So time duration, we're looking at roughly about a year on the schedule for the Mark Twain addition and additions and renovations. So once this is complete, the students will transition back, and then the final phase will begin on site over here, where the demolition of the school and the remainder of the site will be finished out. During construction, so this is our construction site logistics plan that we have. So this is gonna be the new McGrath here that you see over here is the existing. Right through here, this kind of green line here, that is going to be our site construction fence. So students, parents, nobody will be able to enter in the site over here on the west side in between the two schools. So these will be completely separated off from one another. For construction, this area right here, this is gonna be our kind of, our construction access road here with the areas shown here in orange, and also here will be parking available to the contractors onsite. On days when there might be quite a few people onsite, we do have this area shown as some extra construction parking over here. Then also in our front inspects, we are also putting it on the contractor to where if they require more parking than what is currently shown onsite, that they will be required to seek outs and rent parking from somewhere else in the community. So that should help prevent any overflow parking on the city streets here, and kind of minimize and compact all that into on our, on our site, so it's not kind of overflowing out any. Real quickly, this is the floor plan, so this is gonna be that two-story building here. This is our elementary wing up here is gonna be our ECC wing, so main entry over here for the ECC, and over here is gonna be that main entry for the elementary school. And then this is quickly showing the second floor of the elementary wing there. Elevations of the building, we are looking at using a decorative concrete masonry unit. It looks very similar to limestone. So we're gonna be using that at select locations, so down low at the gym, and also at entry points such as the main entry for the elementary, and also at the ECC wing. To kind of help, help to find those and pop those a little bit more. Otherwise, we'll be looking at using a red brick blend that matches some of the brick seen throughout the neighborhood there. We'll be using eaves up higher, and then asphalt chingled roof up top. So one of the things that the asphalt chingled roof does for us is this also helps to screen our rooftop units up here without needing additional screening. So this kind of, this helps prevent those views down from the street view. So running through some of the renderings real quick, they begin to disappear as we get down to grade level here. And then this is a view on the backside of the early childhood center entry. So I quickly ran through that, is there any questions or concerns I can address?
Thanks, Mr. Higgins.
Could we hear from, could you just recap? Because the purview of this meeting is to make a recommendation to the Board of Aldermen to issue the permit for the curb cuts. So could you just reiterate that part real quickly about what, what you guys need as far as curb cuts in each phase?
Yeah, so the only curb cut that we're looking at would be this one up here. Currently, there's a existing kind of utility curb cut, nothing that's official, that's located right up here. There's some existing telecom infrastructure up here in this corner. So this would be the new curb cut that we're proposing, located right here.
Great, and could we, is Mr. Lee Cannon online? If he is, we'd like to hear from him. His comments since he filed the traffic study.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask just a quick question before we do that?
Oh yeah, see your hand up now.
Sorry, no problem, just making sure, it appears that that diagonal street parking, the 21 slots there is not gonna be changed, is that correct? And that's good, that's there now, I believe, or is it gonna be expanded?
Yes, these are current, to the current diagonal parking. There is one thing that we are looking at that we may, if this is acceptable, that we may need to change this. So right now, our sight lines are slightly blocked by some of the diagonal parking here. We would be proposing to change the first, I believe, nine of these into parallel park installs, so that a way we can achieve the 280-foot site distance that we need from this point down here towards Litzinger Road.
Thank you, thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cannon. Hello? Good evening. My name is Lee Cannon. Many of you may already know me, but I am a principal with CBB in St. Louis, and I am working on behalf of the city, so I am your traffic engineer. And I have looked at the site related to the issues of access and focused on the changes to the curb cuts proposed to the city streets. I believe that you all will have a copy of my report dated March 19th, 2021. And I went through a handful of recommendations in that report. Generally, all of which have been addressed in a acceptable manner by the school district. The one-way flow coming in at St. Clair and leaving the high school is a very efficient flow. It will allow a lot of stacking room on the site, which will be a positive, especially in the dismissal, but also in the arrival time period. And as the two-lane approach comes to high school opposite Harrison, that will allow one lane to be dedicated for left turns out, and one lane to be used as a through, a straight, or a right turn. As Mr. Higgins mentioned, I've been in communication with the site civil engineer who is looking at the site distance, and that is the ability to view oncoming cars to the north and the south. There is a concern based on those head installs that they are working around. I gave them some options to consider, and they are currently pursuing the option of removing the obstruction or moving the obstruction, as they mentioned, changing some head installs to parallel parking. They also changed the St. Clair access. Today, there's a separate in-and-out lane divided by a median, and that has now been changed to a single curb cut coming onto the site. We also applaud the, the one-way flow that they are going to go with all of the time. That's not just during arrival dismissal, that's one-way flow through the site 24/7. We also asked, again, because the city has limited purview, we asked for a written operations plan, which the school provided to the city, which indicates their intended use of the curb cut as one-way flow in at St. Clair and out at high school. They've also provided turning template documents in accordance with our request that confirm that a standard school bus and a fire truck can navigate the site so that any busing that happens, whether that be of students in the future, or for activities, field trips and such, or fire response, all that can be accommodated on the site as needed, and they will not have to load out on the road like they do today. So I'm here, if you have any questions. Two other things. As you know, they're gonna have to build the new school while the existing school's in place, so we recommended completely separated access for construction vehicles on the regular, you know, day-to-day operations. And then they're going to have two schools at the site at the same time, and we analyzed whether or not the roads can accommodate that. And our opinion is it would be best to offset those, and they have also agreed to do that. School peak lasts somewhere between about 15 to 20 minutes. So an offset around 30 minutes should be acceptable for start and end times to spread out the peaking on the local road system. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or specific concerns that you might have related to traffic at the school site.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question, sorry, I know that there's a lot of folks on there.
Go ahead.
All right. Mr. Cannon, I think that Mr. Higgins had mentioned this as well. When we're talking about the phase where there'll be both elementary schools operating out, they're looking at a staggered start for drop-off. Could you, and I know that you looked at some traffic numbers from, I guess I would say a normal year, not a pandemic year. Could you comment on the ECC pickup and drop-off? I know that they have a wider window for drop-off and how that's gonna affect basically drop-off or pickup times in traffic.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson, that's a very good point, I guess I should have mentioned it. But CBB looked at this site for the city a few years ago when there was an interest by the school in extending this access road from its current terminus out to High School Drive opposite Harrison. So we did traffic counts and site observations, I believe it was 2016. So we had a good handle on what normal might look like, assuming that we do go back to that type of traffic in the future. So we did use all of those numbers in our analysis. Second thing is that we got the enrollment numbers for both schools, and they're very, very similar. So the assumption was that it's plus or minus double the traffic. That would be for students, parents, and staff traffic flows. So my apologies, you had one other part of that question.
The, the other part was about ECC, which just has a wider drop-off window. You have parents that are dropping off, obviously, with early pickup, early drop-off, you know, as early as 7:00 AM, I believe, up until regular school time. One comment though, just on the Mark Twain, because of the distance involved from the neighborhoods, I would imagine that there's probably gonna be a bit more car traffic than there would be for existing McGrath students, simply since many of them live close to the school. So just wanted to mention that as well.
Yes. So with respect to the Mark Twain traffic, well, with respect to the Brentwood School District, there's definitely a high number of walking students and biking students. They do not currently run buses for their own students, but there have been some instances in the past where there are some transported students in special circumstances. They discussed many different options. One of which was a shuttle system. And so, you know, the, the fact that the Mark Twain students would meet over at Mark Twain and be shuttled over in larger groups. I was hoping that they might address some of that operationally in the document that we asked for about traffic flow. But if Mark Twain generates about the same number of cars as the current McGrath, or even a little bit more, the, the basically this road that they're creating through the middle of site will easily be able to accommodate the stacking.
Thank you. No other questions, Mr. Chairman, thanks.
Ms. Kirk and Meyer, anything to add?
I was looking at my list, and I think almost everything has been covered. But just to reiterate the role of the commission tonight. So the city has really limited approval authority of school facilities. So for instance, with the other project, with the middle and high school project, we don't review their construction plans, we don't conduct the inspections. So likewise, with the early planning stages, the city doesn't have a role to actually approve the site plan and the building elevations, but it's a great package, and the Brentwood School District obviously provided us more information than probably what was really necessary, but appreciate all the information. But again, tonight, the responsibility of the commission, if they feel like making a recommendation, would be just a motion to recommend if the Board of Aldermen should approve the necessary permits for the project, meaning the curb cut permits and the additional work that would take place on the right-of-way. So again, appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this. And there has been a lot of work behind the scenes, this all started months ago. And the plan that was put in your packets last week, just so I can kind of give you a timeline of this, those changes, that site plan was already modified to a pretty significant extent, based on the comments from Mr. Cannon's traffic studies. So the Brentwood School District team has been great to work with. So you had quite a significant modified site plan when you saw it last week. And now again, I think by my notes, everything was touched upon as to what's basically happened the last week with figuring out the arrangement to make sure we've mitigated any site distance problems and things of that nature. So I don't know that I really have anything technical to provide at this point. I did want to let you know, though, that in preparation of this meeting, there were notices that were sent out that the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting was going to happen tonight. And again, that this would be moved forward to the Board of Aldermen at some point. So there were a total of 117 notices that were sent out to residents in this immediate area following our notification requirements. And the only other thing I guess I probably want to mention is, is we do have a lot of people connected tonight. And so there's actually staff, department heads as well, that have connected tonight. I know we have our Public Works Director, Fire Chief, and maybe even a few others, but anyway, I don't know if they would have, you know, any comments, or again, they're available for any questions that perhaps might come from the commission that they could assist with answering. The only thing, as I, I also then sent out, I think it was still yesterday, some comments still from staff. And I guess I definitely want to make sure with the, the Fire Chief, I don't know, he still had some concerns that what is gonna be there in the center of the plan that's on your screen, the fire lane, yes, thank you. To make sure, a few things, one, that that is actually wide enough, and so that there, that gate that's shown there, exactly, that that is still actually gonna be able to be accommodated. And as Mr. Cannon said, he did say that there were the, the turning radiuses that were provided on the site plan, which were on the plans that the commission received. But we also just wanna make sure, because fire lanes are gonna be important throughout the project from, from start to finish. And so again, I just wanna make sure that the Fire Chief is, you know, satisfied. Or again, if he needs additional information to make sure that this can accommodate all the fire apparatus, we probably need to check in with that again. But otherwise, I too am just available for any questions, and I'll leave it at that for now, so.
Great, thank you, Ms. Kirk and Meyer. Do we have any other commissioners, or any of the commissioners have any questions? Hearing none. Are there any residents in attendance? Neighbors of the project that would like to, oh, Steve Lockmaller has raised his hand, we have two people who raised their hand. Ms. Wilkins, could you unmute them or turn their camera on or give them the floor, please?
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
I can hear, I can hear you, Steve, yes.
Okay, I just had two questions. Currently, there's a crosswalk just north of this exit that crosses high school. Will that remain in place? And then will the sidewalk on the west side continue towards the high school? Just west, I guess just north of the exit?
Mr. Higgins? The other, the other side, Brent.
We will be putting in a crosswalk that crosses the street over from here to there, and then that'll tie in with the existing one that's, goes up to here. As far as this north side, I'd have to go back and look to see what our civil engineer has. Paul, I know you're on the line, I don't know if you can speak to that any further?
Yeah, so this is Paul Boyer. As Brent indicated, yeah, on the south side, we're aligning that crosswalk, so it's gonna align with the new entrance. And the sidewalk on the west side will carry across the entrance and connect to the north to the existing sidewalk off the, just off the property, so that will be continuous.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, we have another hand up from Ms. Karen Smith.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I live on Harrison at 8:30 Harrison, and the corner at High School and Harrison, which is kind of directly across where you're proposing these curb cuts, has been a safety issue for a long time. In 2016, when the school wanted to put that curb cut in, there were a lot of concerned neighbors at that time. And so I'm surprised that there are not more neighbors, that I haven't heard from more neighbors. I did, so our concerns with the current. I did, so our concerns with the current situation is that it is a huge safety issue. There's a lot of volume that fly up and down the street, so high volume. And, you know, when there are events on that playground and they do that parallel parking, it's really dangerous because you have a lot of parents with young kids, and, you know, they're running all over the place, and the cars are flying up and down that street. That pedestrian walk, the cars never slow down. They never observe the pedestrians trying to get across that street. So safety, speed, and there's a lot of cars that go up and down there currently already. It's kind of a pass-through street. When cars are trying to avoid the light, at Litzinger and Brentwood, they go down high school and then Harrison. If they're trying to get over to, like, Panera's and Brentwood Square, they shoot down high school drive. So it's a, it's a kind of a cut-through area, anyway. I understand that the school did do workshops, and they did, you know, put out flyers. All my neighbors that I've spoken to recently have not, do not, were not aware of them. And I know Lisa Kirkenmeyer had mentioned that there were notices that were put out. I really would like to know where those notices were put out to, because I live about 10 houses in on Harrison, and I did not receive a notice. So I'm just concerned, and I was wondering what kind of signaling we're going to put there. And we have a stop sign going all the way up high school for all of the cross streets at, like, White, Litzinger, Moritz, and Pine. Are we going to be putting a stop sign here? And I guess that, that would be it. I am in the process of filling out a traffic. I would, I've asked in the past to have a traffic calming study done for this area, just because I do, I do know the city is doing that in other areas of the city, and I found out that you have to complete a form, which I have completed. I haven't had a, had a chance to get it submitted yet, though. So we'd like to understand kind of how we're going to address safety issues, the current pedestrian crosswalk, how that's going to be improved to make it safer to cross there, you know, if, and what we can do for signaling.
Some of the items that we're looking into, the school district, Andy, I know you're on as well. You can confirm these as well. During school arrival and dismissal time, I believe they are going to have a crossing guard kind of work this intersection over here to help allow for safe crossing for students during those times. Lee, or Paul, I believe there might have been mention of a recommendation for a school zone through here. Did that include reducing the speed down to 20? Was that correct?
It did, but the, the street speed limit is currently marked at 20. So it would just be a reminder, if you will, that there's a school nearby where there could be young pedestrian pupils walk.
Okay. And then another strategy as well that we took at, kind of hoping to improve this intersection with tying into it here, was aligning the intersection here across from one another, just to allow for safer sightlines, safer exiting of the school area here onto high school or driving across straight as well. As far as any other sort of implementations, so.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if there were any other recommendations as well to kind of help improve that from. Yeah.
I'll speak to the crossing guard situation. So my staff currently works, works the crossing duties in the mornings and then in the afternoons. So we, we're going to come up with a, with a good plan to have everybody spread out in all the right places to make sure that crossing the streets is safe for the kids. We're looking at adding another crossing guard over there at Litzinger and Brentwood Boulevard to make sure that that is a little bit safer to add to the crossing guard that we already have there on, on White Avenue and Brentwood as well for the older kids. So we have a big team that can help crossing duty every morning and every afternoon.
Mr. Chairman, one comment if I could, which I do think, and Ms. Smith's point about that parallel parking with the soccer fields being there, having used those for a number of years, I would agree with that. I do believe with the final layout, however, you're going to see that parking, and those parents are going to be moved over to the west. And I think that'll help quite a bit with that particular traffic issue. Kids are going to be playing, and they'll be using the regular pull-in, pull-out spots.
Great. It looks like we have one more resident question in the chat. It's from Mr. Christopher Schuster. Could we give Mr. Schuster the microphone or the floor? And you can put his question out? I think you're on mute, but you're. Zoom says you're permitted to talk, Mr. Schuster. Turn off your mute. He says his audio is terrible, and just read it. All right, so I will read it. The chat reads about the loading zone. What procedures would there be to ensure that trucks unloading would not interfere with daily traffic for drop-off and pickup? So on the construction side, on the construction plan during those peak times of drop-off and pickup, is there going to be any formal communication or policy with the contractors and subcontractors for those times?
Yes. So in our specs, we actually wrote in some verbiage that any time that there's any sort of large deliveries or anything, that those need to be coordinated with the school district. And that's to avoid some of those peak times like that. One of the benefits, though, since our main site entry for construction is up here on this northeast corner, this does help to avoid some of the traffic that would happen over here on the southwest side. But understanding that that construction traffic would still be going through this kind of area through here, which would interfere with school pickup, drop-off, that was kind of, that was the reasoning for that verbiage, and restricting those times to off-times that aren't during school pickup, drop-off times.
Great. Thank you. I don't see any other questions, comments, or hands raised. Do any of the commissioners, would any of the commissioners like to make a motion?
Chairman Chit, please, if I could. I see that one of the attendees, there's also Mr. Nolan, and he provided some comments via email this afternoon. So I don't know if he also would, would want to review his comments. If not, I could just read them to. Okay, I think he might.
Yeah, Lisa, you can go ahead and read those.
Okay.
He has the floor.
Okay. So for Mr. Nolan, he sent us a 3:48 today. He had two suggestions. One, I would propose that the entrance only have one lane, or that the commission's approval place a condition on the site that the two lanes must be one-way to allow entrance from St. Clair onto the site, but to prohibit exiting from the school site onto St. Clair. For anyone who has ever driven in the neighborhood in the morning or afternoon, it is nearly impossible to travel north and south on St. Clair. The northbound traffic also funnels into the middle and high school traffic and creates havoc on the narrow streets where cars are parked. If someone wants to respond to that.
Lisa, this is Brian Nolan. Just want to add, add to that. I just want to make sure that, you know, there's, right now, it seems like there's nothing to prevent people from exiting to the west. So if that is clear, that it's one-way or prohibited in the future so that we don't have two-way traffic exiting to St. Clair, I think that would be helpful. But also, I had submitted those comments prior to reviewing the traffic study, which I was able to review earlier during the course of this presentation. So I think that should be addressed in there.
And your second comment's been addressed as well, Mr. Nolan?
The second comment was related to potential access to Litzinger. And I'm sorry if you addressed that earlier, but I missed that.
I can go ahead and touch on both of those items. So on entry here, we will need to have it wider, just for the fire apparatus, to be able to kind of turn into the site here. It will be marked, though, with one-way. So there'll be do-not-enter signs over here on the east end of the site, as long as pavement markings on the pavement as well, that kind of help illustrate that this is a one-way. To kind of touch on this, initially, we did look at an idea of looking to connect back to Litzinger, going through the site this way. One of the issues with that is its proximity to St. Clair over here. Typically, in the past, I've seen that as a no-no, as far as traffic studies and traffic analysis goes, with intersections being too close to one another. This also creates two other issues as well. So one is a kind of internal site safety concern with putting an access drive in between the two different playfields. And then the third issue was just the overall elevation change onsite. So we have about 30 feet of elevation change from this corner on the southwest, all the way up here to the northeast corner. By putting that drive through here, this would likely have to create a retaining wall that would further divide this site in between the two playfields here.
Great. Thank you all.
All right. Oh, I saw a hand. Mr. Nelson has a hand up.
Only to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, if you're ready for that.
Please.
A motion to make, to recommend to the Board of Aldermen that the curb cuts be approved as submitted, and the plan be approved as submitted, as revised and submitted, but yes.
And Ms. Bilderback has a hand up? With a second for Mr. Bilderback. Roll call, please. Ms. Wilkins.
Sherry Bilderback. Yeah. Mark Favazo.
Yes.
Jeff Moore. Hart Nelson.
Yes.
John Newberger. John Ritter.
Yes.
Lisa Shearing.
Yes.
So the motion has been approved. Thank you. Next item is the Aldermanic Report. I'm not sure if our Aldermen, Lockmuller, any other Alderman have anything to report? Hearing none. Moving on to the city finer report. Ms. Kirkenmeyer, any, anything to add?
No additional reports this evening. Thank you.
I did want to ask, we had discussed or heard there may be live meetings someday soon. Any updates on that?
Yes. It was, at the last board meeting, it was noted by Mayor Dimmitt that they are planning to resume in-person live meetings in May. So the city staff is taking the, getting everything scheduled with our video company and everything, again, to resume that. So I know I had sent something out to all of our boards and committees that our department assists, and just tried to get some additional feedback. But everyone either didn't comment, or I think is ready to come back. But we will still have whatever guidelines would need to be in place in terms of maybe maximum occupancy in a room, social distancing, and, you know, mask and what have you. So anyway, yeah, I don't know if anyone from the commission would like to comment on it this evening, but I think certainly there is going to be potential that we could have, and I think we will be having a May meeting. So I think potentially we will be having an in-line meeting, unless that maybe doesn't work out for the majority of the commission, and then that's up to the commission to decide. So.
Very good. Do I hear a motion from any commissioners? A motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Opposed? Hearing none. This meeting is adjourned, and thanks, everybody, for attending.
Thanks, everyone.